Thursday, November 2nd, 2017. May I have the attendance, please?
Mrs. Beely?
Here.
Lyfer?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Shay?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Sebastian?
The hinters.
Here. You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his holy sovereignty and justice.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Look at us cruising right through. Do we have anyone here that would like to speak, a public comment on any agenda items? If you do want to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes. Seeing none, I will close public comments. I have a big crowd tonight, so it's impressive. Thanks for coming, everybody. Takes us right to 6.0 Superintendent's Report.
All right, we're getting fancy with our presentations. Kelly's made us a slide deck, so as I rattle off numbers, you have a visual up there that you can look at. And again, our enrollment, the first part of my report is our enrollment update, and as always, our enrollment is available under the Superintendent's page as well on the website. So this month, November 1st enrollment data is 957 at the high school, which is a decrease of three students. We're stable at the middle school, 716 students. One new student joined us at 676 for Wentworth. A new student joined us at Blue Point, so we're at 176. We have one less student at Eight Corners at 223, and Pleasant Hill is stable at 170. So our district enrollment is at 2,918 students this month, and that is an overall decrease of two students from last month. I also just wanted to give you a little update on NEASC. So this is a big accreditation visit that's coming up for our high school, and it starts on Sunday. There is a public participation component to this on Sunday, so there will be a panel presentation from 1:15 to 2:15 in the auditorium at the high school, and that is open to the public. And then there's also a welcoming reception for the NEASC committee that will take place from 4:20 to 5:20 on Sunday. And then again on Wednesday, from 2:10 to 2:30, there are some closing remarks that will take place in the auditorium at the high school where the public, again, is welcome to be a part of that. And then each day, Monday and Tuesday, and even in Wednesday morning, there's a very busy schedule where the committee will be meeting with smaller focus groups. They'll talk with high school leadership, they'll talk with teachers, they'll talk with students, they'll talk with board members and district level leaders, and also the administrators from the sending district. So we're really excited to show off our high school, and we look forward to the input. And I would just say a special thank you to the high school leadership, including the teacher leaders who have been chairing this work. They have been working incredibly hard to participate in the self-study last year, but also to prepare for the visit. And it's really an opportunity for our community to share what's great about Scarborough. And so we do encourage the public to come to these portions where it's open and engage with the committee and also get to hear about the great things that are happening at Scarborough High School. And then the next item under my report is the School and Business Partnership presentation, and we have Karen Martin from Sedco here, along with our very own Director of Curriculum and Assessment, Monique Culbertson, to talk with you about what's happening with the school business partnership.
Good evening. Thank you for that introduction. Again, I'm Karen Martin. I'm with the Scarborough Economic Development Corporation. And for the last year, Monique and I have had the pleasure of serving as co-chairs for this interesting committee that has come together that's been known as the Scarborough School Business Partnership. This committee really started as a way to organize a group of folks who are really interested in bringing the business community into the schools and looking for interesting learning opportunities for Scarborough students. And our group includes a wide variety of folks, from business organizations to industry leaders in bioscience, in banking. We've got a lot of participation, obviously, from the school side as well, and from the University of New England actually has participated in this as well. So there was a lot of people coming together to really think about how we discover some new opportunities for student learning. We all came with, really, I think, a host of different ideas, from, you know, how do we have guest lectures, to internships, to mentor programs, and certainly career exploration. And we all had this fundamental idea of pooling resources from all three opportunities, pooling the resources to engage students in ideas outside the traditional classroom. With nearly 1,400 businesses and 17,000 employees in this town, there's a lot of talent out there that I think we can reach out and tap into to really begin to share knowledge with our students. So the next piece that we really needed to think about was, you know, as the group got excited, how did we really bring everybody together and start thinking about, you know, if you will, all rowing in the same direction since we all had different ideas? And the first thing we wanted to do is really talk about a mission statement. And there's nothing like a mission statement to focus the direction of rowing, if you will. So our mission statement, and we've sort of pulled out some of the key words here, but it's really about cultivating the relationships and identifying school leaders, community leaders, business leaders, and starting to form some partnerships around the student learning opportunities. We certainly talked about career exploration, students understanding the business culture, community responsibilities, how to be a citizen of the world. Really, that's really part of this mission statement. And we also fundamentally realized that everybody has to benefit from the partnership. The student has to benefit, the schools have to benefit, and really the business or community partner has to benefit. And it all adds up to both a great experience for the students, but also it's part of, really, the future of our economic development. And so that was really important to folks like me involved in community development, involved with the business community. These are all the types of things that, really, we have this great opportunity to talk about. But as we developed the mission statement, we also realized we wanted to have that vision for each of these areas. We wanted to talk about students, we wanted to talk about the business community, and we wanted to talk about schools. So from the student perspective, we, there was a lot of discussion about students being able to graduate with a resume, and that's what some of these rich resources were going to help with. They really wanted some discovery around career experiences. How do you determine what you want to be? Certainly, there's the issue of many of the jobs that may exist in the future don't even exist now. So how do you begin to provide opportunities around that? We also wanted to talk about creating authentic community experiences. We wanted them to become citizens of the world, and we also, something very important to some of our business communities, community leaders, was having students really experience the culture of the working world. It's not just about facts and figures and thinking, there's culture in each of the business communities. And then we also wanted to have them to have experience, again, beyond the classroom. For the schools, I think the community, the schools wanted to bring the community resources into the culture of education. How do we bridge the gap? How do we speak the same language? We wanted to articulate all the things that the schools are really doing to prepare students. It's a different world out there, and there are many things that I think those of us who, you know, grew up 10, 15, 20 years ago, we never thought about some of the activities that are in the schools now. And so I think that was part of the community education. We certainly, schools wanted to attract talent to enrich the student experiences, and we wanted to develop and describe, really, access points for the student partner, for the partnerships. And then lastly, we did talk about what's the vision from the partnership side, from the business side? And part of that was advocating for and contributing to the educational excellence. By being involved in schools, being involved in student learning, it does present to the employees of businesses a really creative outlet for them, and many of the businesses talked about that. That was important to them. They also get a chance to articulate their core values and what the opportunities are for different industries. They are generating excitement for career exploration, community involvement in learning. And then they also wanted to identify the opportunities that really transcend both student businesses and the schools. And one of the fundamental pieces that we discovered was perhaps missing was this idea of an access point, and we're going to have Monique now talk about our discussions under infrastructure. How do you help a business understand, where do you start in this process? How do you really become involved?
Thank you, Karen. Thank you very much. Yes, one of the things we learned in talking to the businesses and to other organizations was that they really didn't know how to reach out to the schools. Do we talk to a teacher? Do we talk to the principal? Do we talk to central office? And in some cases, the teacher would send them to central office, and central office would send them back to the school. So we had our own work to do in order to build a process, and we developed a bit of a protocol, and we're practicing that protocol on some developing partners and partner projects. So we're also working on developing outreach as well, as well as managing potential partners and partnerships, because we don't want to let them slide and those opportunities not be taken full advantage of. So as we develop these pieces, our focus is on the students, and so Karen spoke a little bit about the opportunity areas. One of the things in getting our own act together to encourage partnerships is what are the possibilities for outside organizations to become involved with the schools? So Karen talked a little bit about career exploration, workplace skills. It could be just merely curriculum enrichment in order to provide an authentic learning experiences for students. It could be service learning. There are many service organizations out there in the community, and we want to provide students the opportunity to engage in service learning. But there's also community and life skill development for some of our students who just need to learn how to become a citizen within the community. So very often, our students will come and visit Town Hall and get a tour of Town Hall and see how Town Hall works, and sometimes it'll come into the schools and help show students. But we also want to communicate that it is about learning, and so sharing those cross-disciplinary learning goals we have within the guiding principles also provides some direction to outside organizations, potential partners, what we're all about. And so we're looking for opportunities for our students to become communicators, continuous learners, creative problem solvers, contributors, and critical thinkers. And these are graduation requirements as well. So our developing projects that we're working on right now, we're working on a surfing and climbing student ambassador program at the middle school through salt pump climbing. And so that's a developing program where we're looking to engage some students in a project. There are also, as a graduation requirement, is a personal learning experience and part of the high school graduation requirement. One subset of that that we've been involved in is helping to support the high school internship course. But there'll be some other experiences that we'll be looking for potential partners to make sure that our students engage in a personal learning experience outside the walls of Scarborough High School. But we also serve a purpose of supporting ongoing projects that have been in place. A mentoring program that's developing at Wentworth School, those folks who are involved in promoting that mentor program came to the partnership meeting one day, talked about the mentorship program, and we're looking for potential partners. We're also involved with the Maine Medical Center Research Institute, the Student Experience that Judy Sanhope at the high school has been involved in. They are expanding that curriculum and offering it again this year. And over time, the high school has been involved, both for seniors, and I believe there may be some sophomore involvement in a financial literacy experience. As a result of these projects, one of the things that we have identified are that we have shared core values. I'm not going to go through the whole list, but it ranges from everything from, okay, let's be reasonable and set up projects that we can manage, all the way to, okay, how do we develop these mentoring programs? How do we develop these partnerships? But also sustain these partnerships with annual review and evaluation to be able to make the partnerships stronger and more applicable to our needs as well as the partnerships' needs. So I'd like to reach out and thank all of the participating businesses and organizations, but also in reaching out, invite people to become involved. They can certainly get in touch with either myself or Karen Martin, and we meet monthly. We work in small subgroups, but we also work as a whole group in sharing and updating each other on all the goings on and all the possibilities, both in the school and in the community. Both Karen and I like to entertain any questions, if you have any questions.
I have a couple of questions. How many businesses are part of this partnership? I know there's 1,400 in town, but how many?
There are about 40 folks on our mailing list, distribution list, typically at our, what I would refer to as our regular participants. It ranges about 12 to 15 participants. Sometimes, for example, in August when we had our retreat, it was about 20 people.
And so these are Scarborough business owners, employees of some sort?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes, they have been. I don't think that it's necessarily intended to be limited to just Scarborough businesses. If somebody from a different area, different community really wanted to participate and they had a relationship or wanted to develop a relationship with the schools, I think there's no reason they couldn't.
Because what came to mind in the meeting right before the State of Finance meeting, and Kelly brought up the example that her son came home from school and asked his dad, can you come in and speak to our class about the way you use math in your job? He's a real estate agent, he's a contractor of building, how do you do angles, all that stuff. So I feel like there's this huge amount of resource that we have in our students, parents, guardians, caregivers, that we also can tap into, but they may work in Westbrook or wherever.
Absolutely. I think we totally want to entertain that, and there actually has been someone who has a, who had a business, he lived in Scarborough but had a business elsewhere. And I think that there's a, there's a great deal of opportunity there, and I think this group has been focused a lot on answering that very question, how does somebody get involved? And that's, that I think we've all identified, that's the crucial piece. It has to be easy, you have to know where to start, and we have to make it smooth for folks. Otherwise, we lose that interest that somebody may have.
Right. And it has to be not only simple for them, but it can't be overwhelming for you. It can't, that can't become your job. Like, you know, if we open that, those floodgates, it could be very overwhelming to have to weed through what is relevant for the curriculum this year or the classroom this year.
Absolutely. And I think one of the things we've been cautious about is trying to stick to something that's manageable for some sample projects. You know, we didn't open it up and say, tell us all your, everybody's ideas. We wanted to get a couple of examples down, get sort of the contract, if you will, all the kinks worked out. And I also think that our, we have visions down the road of having really some fairly unique infrastructure. In other words, maybe it's a, we have a website where someone can start here, and the website could answer a lot of questions that I think now we're, we're doing with staffing and internally answering the questions. And so that's our long-term vision, is to just have it really well organized so we take advantage of all of these resources that we know are out there.
Right. And it could be as easy as, and I'm sort of coming in at the 11th hour, but it could be as easy as allowing people to go to a web, to a website, whatever that is, to register as someone who's interested, like Jody Shay, I do marketing, blah, blah, blah. So then you can pull from that database of people to say, okay, we have a teacher who wants this kind of person. Search, and then.
That's the exact, the infrastructure part that Monique talked about, that's exactly what we're developing now and testing out with some of those partners that are going on.
Yeah. Joanne just wanted to add one thing.
I just wanted to add, Jody, in what you were talking about, we do have a lot of people who come in to our schools who will volunteer through Junior Achievement and do different programs, where the program is, right now, we're getting off the ground with K-2. It hadn't been there before, but they are looking for volunteers. We have several teachers who are doing the program, which is a five-week program with, like, learning your community, and a person from the business community comes in and teaches that class to the kids. But I know through six through eight, those are Junior Achievement in a day, and all kids participate that, participate in that. And they drop shadow day where they go to Sprague, they go to the Marriott, they go down to Key Bank to their financial center. And so they're out there for eighth graders. And then at the high school, John McHugh for the last five years has participated in a Titan Challenge, which is a statewide event with over, I think we had last year probably 1,800 kids, and it's a business model where they compete against each other from Bangor, Waterville, Portland, and Bedford. So it's, there are a lot of parents and business people who are coming into the school and doing programs, and I know there's several in Wentworth also that participate in Junior Achievement.
Donna?
Just a comment, I just wanted to thank you both for your leadership in this whole effort. I've sat on the committee with you now for over, well, last year and the year before. I was on the committee before you arrived, and I think you've just given a lot of structure to it. You really created a ladder, you know, and a way to look at this in a more organized fashion, so thank you so much. I think, and what's interesting is just your, both of you coming together, it's just symbolic of the school business piece, so it, I mean, it just makes so much sense. So thanks.
Mary? Well, I'm also really impressed with the whole model, and I think it has, you know, a lot of merit and, you know, it's got a lot of promise. I just had a question as far as, is there a focus too, just to really reach out to alumni of Scarborough?
That's what I was going to say, too.
To, you know, to really, you know, to show kids, okay, look, this is, this kid was, you know, where you were, and now this is where they are. I didn't know if that's, that's something that's a focus at all, or?
We've talked about alumni in a variety of ways.
Yeah, we have not talked about alumni or taking on the project of tracking alumni. We're still working on building that infrastructure piece and that potential database piece, but we're always brainstorming and have lots of ideas every, about every meeting, as Donna and Joanne and Julie can tell. People come every time, they do a little bit of an update, and have you thought about? Usually comes up, that term. So we haven't, really haven't explored the tracking piece, but certainly alumni would be a group that we would reach out to as we begin to look for opportunities for our students. And do we have a way to do that? I'm just wondering, do we have a way?
It's a phone or email at this point. We don't have a website launched yet, but that's the piece that we're, we're looking to get going with.
But as a school district, we don't really have a website.
Specific to alumni, we do have the capability through Naviance to be able to track alumni, but that is an area that Joanne and I actually just were having a conversation earlier about, that is a huge growth opportunity for our districts to really connect with our alumni in a more systematic way, for a variety of reasons.
Oh, absolutely. That could be my new gig. Anyone else that's, don't want to carry anything past?
Actually, I have a question. Are these projects focused more like school-wide, like grade-wise, or just in the classroom?
Great question. The, it all depends. It depends on the partners who come forward in terms of what they can accommodate, and we try, we encourage partners, potential partners, to start small so we can build from successes, but we're open to just about anything. There are, as Joanne described, lots of opportunities that go on. I know Hour of Code, parents come in and do presentations and work with students, so there are lots of things that are already going on in the schools as well. And we certainly don't want to be the bottleneck for that. We just want to provide a better opportunity to engage.
I would like to say that I think it melds really well with the new proficiency-based education shift that we've recently made, and one of the conversations that I've had with people in the community who are concerned about the shift to PBE is that they're like, how are they going to be motivated? And how it, they, how, if we're not doing Class Frank, how are they going to get into law school? And I pointed out to them that beyond law school, nobody's going to give you a grade for the work that you do, and you're going to have to be able to know how to judge your own work and set your own goals. And so I think that this school business development is another way of showing kids that model.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great, just to really solidify for people who are interested in volunteering and for the staff just to know, you know, how do we harness the resource of the community around us? Because I know it's not just limited to Scarborough. I went to some of the first meetings with the School Business Partnership, and obviously UNE is not in Scarborough, but very active in the group, and somebody from Chimbrow was there at that meeting. And so I think it's definitely going to be much easier to manage going forward, and I think, thank you for, thank you for your work. I think it's going to make it smooth for everyone going forward.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you.
Does that conclude your report?
That does conclude my report.
Okay, well, that takes us to the Chair's Report. I don't really have anything, but, just kidding, you guys, this is my last chance, so you're going to hear all my thoughts. Settle in for the night. No, seriously, I just want to just let everybody know, I say it every time, but what a phenomenal organization Scarborough Schools are, really. Top-down, every person you encounter, just professional and respectful and eager to make the best choices for everybody, and I'm glad I had a chance to do it for six years and to be a part of it. I think we've made some improvements, and I wish we could do more, but it's time for me to take a backseat. When I started Cormical's in kindergarten, and the girls were in fourth grade, and now they are sixth and 10th grade, so it's time to be in my family again. They're not sure what they're going to do with all my time there, but coming back, get ready. Thursdays, your free time's over, and all the other days of the week. And that's the thing, that's the, that's the hidden secret of the school board, is all the time it takes, so. I couldn't go cold turkey, I'm keeping some committees, so I still have a, I'll be around, guys. Don't miss me too much. You know my phone number. But I'm sure that the new members coming in will be able to jump right in and make contributions right out of the gate, very positive of that, and continue the good work being done. And it's been an honor, so thank you. And we're going to move on to somebody else who can talk now. Let's do finance. Come on, Jody.
Wow us. Wow you with finance. So the finance committee met just before this meeting, and we went over the first quarter of 2018, which is shocking, because I think the last meeting we did the final of 2017. So the budget is always working. Julie always says that we're, we're always reviewing last year, sort of developing this year and looking towards the future, so it's never-ending. We have met as a full school board and a full town council about a month ago, maybe three weeks ago, to talk about communication for the budget and ideas that, ideas and ways that we can bring more people engaged in the budget process and help the general public to understand the budget and all that it encompasses, not only the school side, but also the municipality side. So we met, I think it was October 19th we decided. And- So we met, I think it was October 19th we decided, and came up with some great ideas, and we'll sort of touch base one final time again with the town council and the town manager to get any last ideas there, and then work towards improving the foundation that we've already set up in the last two to three years. We've always met as a joint town council and school board finance committee, but we feel like there may be ways to build upon that. And it could be as simple as changing times of meetings or formats of meetings. We found that this format could be intimidating to the general public to have to get up and speak, and then we don't get to respond. Like, it doesn't help with the discussion, so maybe there's a different way to go about that. And I think everyone at that meeting was very open to sort of massaging the way we currently do things to make it more user-friendly to the general public. So I think that will be an ongoing conversation over the next couple of months as we gear up for more budget discussions to start for 2019. And then we, so the review of the first quarter financials was just sort of a draft for us to ask questions to Kate Bolton, and she will post all of this information. We had a couple of questions that she needed to go back to, and before she sends it out to the full board and posts it on the website, she will make those adjustments and then let us know that it's up for everybody.
Donna?
Well, the school business partnership, you just heard from them, so you need anything from me? Policy, we have requested some information from Drummond-Woodson on a few different policies, just to hear what they have to say about a number of things. We did question the issue of medical marijuana in the schools. And also, we touched briefly on the need for a policy on the business partnership. We need to be able to make sure we all understand, you know, what's gonna happen there on both sides, business and school, and so whether or not we may need to write a policy on that. We touched briefly on the topic of cell phone use, and I was at the state conference last week, and in one of the sessions that I sat in with some lawyers from Drummond-Woodson, they were talking about the changes that schools are starting to discuss around the state due to the increase in bullying that's going on due to social media. And so schools are beginning to talk about what to do about cell phone usage. Interestingly enough, today I found an article in this week's Time Magazine, the latest copy, and it was all about this topic and some things that are happening around. So I've made copies for all of you so that you can read it, and, you know, just to, because I don't know what we're going to do about this, but just to have some background so that all of you are on board and begin to think about and maybe search for more information on the topic should we decide to look into. And, you know, well, we'll go from there. So that's it.
Okay. Carrie?
The communications committee put out our fall newsletter last month, and currently I feel like the communications committee and the finance committee are really kind of meshing quite a lot, in addition to the fact that two of us are on both committees. I think that a lot of our talk right now is about how to begin talking about the next budget season and using the lessons that we've learned from the past and different ways that that can look and feel. So that's where we are right now, and we have yet to schedule our next meeting, but we will do that soon.
Just before we get to the student report. Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. I want someone, I know Mary and Donna, you're both, they're both days. If you, wanna give us kind of like a quick summary of how the MSMA conference was last week? Like, maybe just touch on some of the workshops you went to, or...
I went to a legislative advocacy workshop, which was really helpful, just talking about how we can work with our legislators to, you know, help our education funding and help build relationships. And they talked about, you know, really building a relationship with our legislators so, you know, we can be on the same page, and then if we need to ask for, you know, when there's bills that would affect us, you know, how we can work with them. I also went to developing a media strategy, which was run by the Kennebunk Schools, which had some good information about really, so definitely will want to talk about that in communications, just talking about really trying to hit on all fronts, you know, to get that information out, and ways to work with the community. And then I also, let's see, I also did one on, oh, on collective bargaining. So I'm just talking about that, so.
And you were the delegate too, so what were the issues that you voted on?
The issues on that side, there were some about, I'm trying to think, as far as that... I know there was, as far as they, that they wanted to make sure of the regionalization, that they weren't really in favor of regionalization, and that that should just be something that's kind of more voluntary and not that they're penalized. That was a big deal.
Okay. And Donna?
So I spend the day and a half in all legal workshops, so almost everything...
Taking the torch, Donna.
Yeah, I just, they're so valuable because it's a real chance for us to be with the Drummond-Woodson lawyers and just learn so much more from them. So I did a lot on negotiations and just the legal impacts on so many different aspects of school, in schools, so I found it very, very helpful to go to those, so.
Yeah, I think, I've always found the MSMA workshops to be really good, almost better than when we went to the national one when it was in Boston. Those were good, but they're not specific to what we deal with. You know, it was topics that are much more broad. So I like going to hearing from, you know, the communities that surround us, and even far away in Aruska County, that issues that they're dealing with and how they're doing it differently, but thank you. The student report?
Okay, so in the high school, PSATs were earlier this month. That was quite a long day. I think they went well. I just heard a lot of complaining afterwards, but that's to be expected. I know last week, the math team had their first meet over, right out of our high school. Singing in the Rain starts tomorrow. I think today's like their last night of rehearsals. Parent-teacher conferences were last week, and the volleyball team won state championships last week. That was pretty good. At the middle school earlier this month, the bike walk raids happened, except that it was quite rainy. I was right out on an old orchard handing out snacks, so lovely cleaning up. They have not said how much they raised yet, but I'm gonna find out eventually. The flu clinic has started to go through Scarborough schools. They went through the high, I think last week it was at the high school, and next week it should be at the middle school. Unity Day happened on the 28th at the middle school. It was a pep rally to embrace kindness, acceptance, and inclusion, and it was to fight bullying in the schools. They were all asked to wear orange to represent unity. In Wentworth, they had a meteorologist come, and the students had to be at school at six in the morning. I would not want to do that for a little bit early for me, but it was really cool for students to have their five minutes of fame and be part of the broadcast. And in the primary schools, the book fair started to make its way through the district, and that's all for me.
Kelly?
I was just gonna say one thing about the soccer team.
Okay, that's what I was...
Okay. Take it, Jody, take it.
I was just gonna say that the girls' soccer team plays for the state championship on Saturday. It was originally somewhere else, but it's been moved to Deering High School at 12:30.
Yeah. So it's really convenient.
Football's tomorrow night, right?
Football's tomorrow night, home, seven o'clock.
Is that, what is that, is that quarter? Like, what, where is it on the...
It's a playoff game, but they had to buy the first round.
Oh, okay. Kinda early in the...
Yeah.
Look at that weather. Thanks, Dylan. So there's the weather.
Can I introduce recognition?
Okay, so then, 10.0 recognition.
So I have four points to recognize tonight. The first one, the first two Dylan made mention of, so yes, we did have WMTW Channel Eight at Wentworth School. So here's some videos. You can see the students out there in the dark, as Dylan mentioned, it was nice and early. And they also got a chance to go in the news van, and there's a little clip here that Kelly will share with us.
How did, was it a particular class, or could just whoever was gonna be awake could tell anyone?
It was, it was based on those who could get there, because transportation wasn't provided, so Kelly's gonna turn up the volume so we can hear it, and then we'll play that quick video clip.
I think it was advertised for anyone who was studying weather at the time.
I see. Maybe a particular grade.
I think it was mostly fourth grade.
Was your sister there, Dylan?
No, she's in seventh grade.
Oh, she's in seventh grade, geez. Don't tell her I said that.
Edit that. Edit that out.
Wentworth School in Scarborough, lucky enough to chat with over 150 fourth graders who are very interested in weather. They actually have their own weather station here at the school so that they can monitor their weather, make sure they can get out for recess, although with these wet days ahead, might be a little bit questionable. Lots of questions, of course, about extreme weather, and the students who joined us at the bus stop this morning really wanted to know about heavy rains, flooding, as well as hurricanes. So plenty of topics covered today. If you would like us to come to your school, make sure you fill out the request form at wmtw.com. In Scarborough, I'm WMTW meteorologist Mallory Brook.
I wish Principal Crosby was here, because she could share with us the questions the students were asking of the camera crew and the weather men and women. They were really good sophisticated questions. I'm not remembering them off the top of my head, but that was an exciting event. There's another picture for you, look at that beautiful sky.
Enthusiastic flavors.
Their moment of fame. And then also, as Dylan mentioned, the middle school Bike and Walkathon. This year is the last year that it will be a split, that the donations will go to the AIDS Foundation, that's right here in Portland. This year, they decided to split the money that was raised, and so I believe that to date, the numbers, the money is still rolling in, and so we don't have an accurate number, but it's up to at least $6,000. So the other half of the money that was raised will go to support one of our Scarborough alums' school in Houston, in Hamburg, in Hamburg rather, in Texas, who suffered the impact of Hurricane Harvey. So the other thing, this is Tom Griffin and I there on that rainy morning. I did not walk, so this is kind of a little, you know, false advertising for me, but I was there to see all of the families who came out, and it was a little disappointing because they weren't able to bike due to the weather, but the kids and the parents still did walk, and it was a great community event. And this has been, this was the 31st year, I believe. I believe this is the 31st year, yeah. Colby's giving me the thumbs up. Colby was there, and so they have raised over $150,000 for the Franny P. Boddy House in Portland. And again, like I said, this year, it was 6,000 split between both that organization and supporting students in the Hamburg Middle School. So we're so proud of all of our students. I think another proud point that our community should really be aware of is how involved our students are and how engaged they are, not only in their local community, but as global citizens. And that's something that we strive toward in our long-term improvement plan. So thank you to all the students and the parents who made it happen, this and many other great opportunities. So the next point of recognition is that our very own Assistant Superintendent Joanne Thiesmore was named Assistant Superintendent of the Year. So these photos are me being the proud mama for Joanne. At the MSMA conference, really is amazing to have, to be able to, as a new superintendent, have an experienced, expert administrator like Joanne to work alongside each and every day. She is both my professional coach and my life coach, so I just so enjoy the opportunity to be able to work with you. And I'm still learning about how amazing she is. There's all these little stories that sneak out every once in a while. But we also want to thank Allison Marchese, our Director of Special Services, for nominating Joanne, because we all believe that she is so very deserving of this honor. And I didn't know if Monique or Kelly wanted to add to the many accolades that Joanne deserves.
Well, I think it's pretty good that last year she had practiced, she won a chair in MSMA, like this, like these chairs, but it doesn't match any of our chairs. She just won it, and instead of a certificate...
It was her prize.
It was literally, they handed her the chair to take out.
We left with a chair.
So she has experience receiving awards there, major awards. So this is, will fit in your office better, and it's very special.
But to add to that, those who don't know, she also received in 2006, middle school principal.
Principal of the Year.
From the same association, so.
So we now, we're doing a little office redesign for the trophy case.
Well, I am very honored, but I also realize that in my 40 years of education, that it's the group of people that I have worked with that have helped me succeed, because without a team of people, you know, you can't do it by yourself. And it's amazing how hard people work in education, and how devoted they are to public education and to helping students, and people are committed. And so that has inspired me along my career, and there are, you know, a couple of teachers, I said to them, you inspire me today, you know, because there's gonna be a future, absolutely.
Talk a little bit about all the positions you've held since you were a substitute teacher here.
Yeah, all the things.
I'm a substitute teacher.
A coach.
Well, I was moving back to Maine, and a friend of mine who was a math teacher in Scarborough said, there's a job. I said, okay, I went to apply, they told me the job was filled already. But I was getting married in four days, so I said, wait a minute, I don't have time to do all this, I heard there's a job. I ended up getting the long-term sub, then the next year became the math teacher, and I think it was like seven years I became the lead teacher. And from the lead teacher, I went to principal, which I stayed for 19 years.
While you were teaching.
While I was teaching too. That's right, I did that, I was teaching and principal, I forgot that.
That's right. Your classroom is across from the office.
That's right.
So you could run to the office real quick and make a call, and we would be really good. Make sure you come back.
Yeah. And then I went to Assistant Superintendent, and I did an interim of Superintendent, and I'm very content and happy with the Assistant Superintendent service.
I keep trying to switch with her, but...
Beautiful. Thank you. No pumpkin. No pumpkin.
Thank you all very much. Congratulations. If Jackie were here, she would make you walk the line. I wish she liked what you do it anyway, but we'll tell Jackie. We just, we clap in our places.
All right, and the final recognition for tonight is to once again recognize Kelly Murphy for being our school board chair for the last year. I don't know if you've done that before.
No. It's about all I could handle, I, one and done.
And also for giving so much of her time, passion, and energy to our school district, but also our community at large. You are truly an amazing person, and I know that as I'm still learning things about you, I am completely astonished by your passion and your dedication to serving all kids, all families in our community, and it goes beyond the endless hours you put in for the school board. So thank you for that. We're so proud of you, and we know you're not going that far, so we're not really saying goodbye, we're just saying thank you to you today. And I asked Joanne if she could also say a few words about your service.
Yes, because I've known Kelly for over 30 years.
Wow.
And I was her math teacher, and I remember...
I did join the finance committee at the end.
I was her math teacher, and we were studying about the stock market back then, and learning how to analyze the stock, how it went up, track it through graphs, and we didn't have a lot of the modern stuff to do that. We had to do the fractions by hand.
We had to write letters to get annual reports.
You had to write letters, because I incorporated all of that. Write the letter, a business letter to the company to get their annual report, so that you can read it, and then you can analyze some of the stuff in there to see if it matches what the paper is giving you.
It's a big deal.
It was a good, I was pretty proud of my project. But we did know that we had a Mr. Murphy come in, and after, I don't know if he came in for your class, but we had a Mr. Murphy, Rick Murphy, who would come in and talk about, yep, not knowing that you were gonna be a Murphy.
Not then. I didn't know that then.
And the one thing that we missed out on, Kelly, is that we didn't buy Disney.
I know.
If you and I had bought Disney stock thirty years ago, just think where we could be today. But we didn't do that, we were not risk a good...
Where did you make up?
And the one thing that we missed out on, Kelly, is that we didn't buy Disney.
Hell.
If you and I had bought Disney's stock thirty years ago, just think where we could be today. But we didn't do that, we were not risk takers.
We're in the makeup.
We were not risk takers, because I didn't do it either. But then, years passed, and I met Kelly again, when she came forward for the Wentworth Building Committee, and I have to say, Kelly was truly dedicated to getting out there, to advocating for that new school, and took on many projects, such as the Interior Committee, the Quoeb Committee, the bricks, the color design, and wanted the school to be alive, and also the art project. So, it was really nice to reconnect with you, and see how dedicated you are to helping the kids from Scarborough, along with all her work she does for the backpack program, and making sure kids have food at all times. So, Kelly, you're truly amazing for the work you've done. And we're not done with you.
Stop it. Do we have an executive session?
Come on up here.
Do you want, you want to go first? All right, so, I wrote it down, because I wasn't sure I was gonna get through it. Kelly convinced me probably four and a half or five years ago to run for school board. Now, there's probably a joke in there somewhere, but I do thank you for that, because it has been an incredible, rewarding experience for me. There have been stressful times, and not always all joyful, but it really has been the most rewarding time of my life, so I thank you for that. Your dedication to this town and to the children of this town is unmatched. Thankfully, she promises not to go very far, so we will see her around, and we'll reap the benefits of your enthusiasm. A couple of examples of areas in town that Kelly contributes are the backpack program. She literally will come to your house and pick up food if you can't make it to her house, her bin at her house, which stays there all year long to collect food, she will bring it to Wentworth for you. Pretty much, you just have to provide the food, and she will get it to the backpack program. She volunteers at St. Max's, she volunteers for Project Grace, she volunteers for just about anything. If you ask her to volunteer, she would say yes. I started a fundraiser for the primary PTA probably six years ago called Race to the Point. Her kids had gone through the primary school, yet every year, she would volunteer all day long, in the cold, at Race to the Point, even when her kids were long gone and not in the school. So, she coaches at community services when they were a part of community services. So, you're a hard act to follow, and the list goes on and on and on, but we are so thrilled to have had our chance with you. And so, those are some of the quiet things that she does with not a lot of fanfare, but there's one project that she did that, there's no doubt, she was very loud about.
She was.
As Joanne said, she, her dedication to creating the new Wentworth was amazing, and her dedication, there was no saying no to her. If she ever asked for help with getting the word out, or just standing out front holding signs, I went through a lot of pictures over the last week of little mini of our kids, they're tiny, out there holding these big giant signs, and she was instrumental in getting that school passed. So, we are forever in debt to you for that. We are sad to see you go, but we are very excited for Jack, and Fiona, and Killian, and Cormac to have you back at night, but we know we will see you around, so thank you so much for all that you've done.
So, you've already been given a lot of accolades here. Obviously, you've done an amazing job in your six years here. You brought me on board, too. Carrie, I don't know whether she brought you on, too, or not, but.
This is great.
Yeah, one thing about Kelly, you know, is that when she sets her mind to something she wants done, she's not letting that go until it is done. And so, go ahead and open the school board's gift to you, although all these are your So, one thing that she repeatedly had to answer to the public for was, why does the Wentworth School have to have hanging glass fish in the lobby? And she answered that, she answered that question over and over again, and so, there you go, it made so much sense for you to have that photo.
Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you for all you.
I don't have any kids there anymore, but in the last two days, I've been there two days in a row for meetings. Isn't that awesome, what a community space that is? Whoever designed that building was really thinking about all the ways to use it. And also, I just want to plug real quick, the backpacks really need food right now, for real. For the Thanksgiving break, the shelves are empty, so you can reach out to me, you can drop stuff at the real estate store, I also have a bin there in my husband's office, so anywhere you can drop off food, I'll pick it up, and you can bring it to me, and I'll get it where it needs to go. But, you guys, thank you so much. It's been fun, and I say it all the time, like, I feel like I'm retiring from a job, and I'm not gonna see my friends anymore, but that's why I had to keep some committees. I was telling Jack about, I said, "Well, you know, I'll have so much more free time," and then I started to list the committees I was staying with, and he's like, "That doesn't sound like it's a lot of free time," but it is, it is cutting back. It does take a lot of time, and I said this when I announced my retirement, that it was six years thinking about 3,000 kids, and now I'm back to thinking about the three, and the 3,000, still be in the back. So, thank you guys so much. It's really special. I love my new artwork. We have pretty much bare walls in our house, because we moved while I was still on the school board, so now we can decorate like a school motif is probably gonna be at, so thank you again so much. I've loved it, it's been an honor, and I will miss it.
All right, so you do have to come down the line.
Well, and I wanna, I wanna take just a second, and I know for sure, if Jackie was here, she would not let the moment pass.
Okay, go.
But I'm saying, if she were, and I'm lucky enough to still get to see Kelly at work every day.
That's true.
And I, I had to write it down, because I wasn't sure what emotional state I would be in either. And I just, I, every town should be so lucky as to have a Kelly Murphy or two, to grow up here, and to come back, and settle down, and raise your kids here, and make Scarborough a better place. And it's not just your own kids you care about, obviously. I was also thinking about the deck furniture that is dedicated to the backpack program. I would fill that thing with whatever, but it's there for the kids of Scarborough. And I also wanted to mention the community Thanksgiving, that Kelly was pretty much single-handedly in charge of pulling together last year.
November 23rd, 11 to 1 at Wentworth School, cafeteria.
And also that she isn't afraid to confront tough issues, and I have rarely seen anyone stand so strong and create courageously in their beliefs. You're a role model, you're an amazing citizen, and a great friend, and we'll miss you.
Thanks, guys. Wait till next week. I'm about to send Dylan, sorry. Jackie will be happy with you.
Yep. Thank you.
If I'm getting fortunate one day, I'm gonna get this friend in my car. Call me.
We can have a meeting.
Yeah, we can just have a meeting forever. I know how to do it.
Come to the college. Are you still willing to lay some bricks down, too?
Yes, that was actually really fun arranging the bricks. I would do that again. That was actually very fun. There's a plan, if you look, there's some themes. All right, thanks, guys. Emotional roller coaster, but now we're gonna get to the next highlight, which is meeting minutes of October 5th, 2017. I have a motion.
Move approval is printed.
Second. Any questions, comments, or changes? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. 11.2, meeting minutes of October 19th, 2017. Move approval is printed. Second. Any changes to this one? All in favor? All right, it's also unanimous, thank you. 12.0, appointments, 12.1, high school lead teacher.
All right, hold on. I don't know where my little list is. All right, so my recommendation is to appoint the positions as presented below. 12.1, high school lead teacher, 12.2, high school winter coaches, 12.3, middle school athletic liaison, and 12.4, middle school co-curricular.
Want to take them all together?
Still moved?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just to clarify, the 12.2 is middle school winter coaches, not high school.
Oh, did I say high school?
The updated one that's here says middle.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. I'll take this to 13.0 adjournment.
Before we adjourn, I just have one last thing. We're all gonna go over and have a drink, and toast you, and celebrate, and thank you for your time, so I just wanted to sort of put it out there, that there will probably be more than three school board members there, but there will be no school board business being discussed.
I'm out of the business. Can't talk about it with me anymore.
To celebrate Kelly, so I wanted to put that out there, that we will be over at O'Reilly's after this.
Okay, that's fine. All right. We adjourn, adjourned, your motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned.